Aloha, everyone. Welcome to the November meeting of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. Tonight, we have two members that are inbound. They're running it just a little bit late. First item on our agenda tonight will be the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a fire department representative? Next would be Honolulu Police Department. Lieutenant, welcome.
Hi, Lieutenant Ono from District Six, Waikiki. School over some stats from October. We had seven robberies. The previous month was two. Burglaries, sixteen. The previous month was eleven. Thefts, one hundred forty-nine. The previous month was one sixty-eight. The UMB is twenty-four. Previous month was fourteen. Assaults, thirty-two. Previous month was thirty-one. Sex crimes, three. Previous month was two. Bikes, skateboard on sidewalk, fifty-five citations. And previous month was twenty-one. Speeding, we had eighteen citations. Previous month was two hundred thirty-nine. Parking, we had a thousand seven hundred twenty. Previous month was a thousand nine hundred and eight. And loud mufflers, previous month was three. Oh, this month was three. Previous month was one. Park closures, eighteen citations, two arrests. And the previous month was eighty-two citations, eight arrests. Total calls for services was four thousand five hundred forty-four. Previous month was four thousand seven hundred and seven.
Okay, questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Yeah, Daniel?
Hello. For three months, there was a period where the muffler laws...
Sorry.
No worries. For three months, there was a period where the muffler laws were being enforced. There was anywhere between twenty or thirty citations. It's after this board and myself in particular made a lot of noise about the enforcement of the muffler laws. And now we've had two consecutive months where we're back down to three or four. Is there an explanation for that?
Thing is, just we're just concentrating on different areas right now. I think we're concentrating more on the beach and the drinking on the beach and stuff right now.
So I feel like all your numbers have been fairly consistent. Is that the one area that dropped off?
Um, I'm not sure. You mean just the loud mufflers you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, your numbers have always been fairly consistent until the last couple of months now. You're reporting three or four muffler violations.
Yeah, I guess that's what's dropped off there. I'm not sure.
Okay, well, I'd like that to be a continued effort. You know, that's not something that has gone away. I can hear it right now. Noise is a problem in Waikiki, and I would hope you guys continue to take that seriously.
Okay, I'll bring it up with the major.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Hello. Hi, my name's Sarah. I was wondering, sir, there was that event this Saturday, the street fair, and there was an issue with, um... So special duty officers are assigned to, or sign up for festivals or stuff so forth. Is that correct?
You're talking about the, um...
Like any street closure, when you have a street closure, a street event, special duty officers are voluntarily can sign up. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. May I ask you, how many officers are, have to be... Is there any law written about how many officers have to be assigned to an event?
Uh...
Sorry, this is pretty specific. Why not be your area?
Honestly, often, I don't know.
Okay, no, that's all right. Maybe we can get... Would you mind putting me in contact with someone? Do you know who would I speak with? Because one of the issues too, I'm curious to know, when you put in a request to the police department, how long do they have to tell you, hey, we filled your request? Oh, we didn't? Because on Saturday, the event was almost canceled. Five minutes before they were supposed to close the street. They're like, oh, you know what? We're short officers. We might have to cancel this whole event. And all the vendors are lined up. So I want to know, like, uh... Or he wasn't even notified, like, a few days in advance, like, hey, we're really, we don't have enough. You know, we need to recruiting. So I just wanted to follow up with that. Because we are, we do have more events coming up, which I'm really excited about. I want to make sure that doesn't happen. I'm so sorry, you're the guy who has to take this question.
No, you're, I know what you're talking about. You're talking about the block party.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, but we have more of it's coming up like that. So if you could just let me know who to follow up with, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
You can just call a special duty office.
Okay.
Any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Go ahead. Use the microphone.
Hi, guys. This is the last meeting of the year, Lieutenant, so I just want to thank you guys. Three years ago, at these meetings, everybody told me, well, we're stuck with this nonsense that goes on here. Yeah, but this is the way it's always been. Well, we've been fighting and fighting, and crime is down, double digits in almost every category. Latest victory is the picnic tables across from Oahu. That was our, one of our last remaining outdoor jail psychiatric centers. There's nobody there the last five or six days at the risk of jinxing things. I think you guys have been cracking down on drinking in public and all kinds of other stuff. But that was a real problem, and it's gone. So I want to thank you guys for that and just keep up the good work. It's not impossible. It actually is going on in front of our eyes.
Thanks. Thank you. So when I said we switched off with the loud muffler stuff, that's kind of what we've been doing lately.
Any other questions for the Police Department? Seeing none, thank you very much for being with us tonight. Appreciate it. Uh, next on our agenda, we have Board of Water Supply. Dominic?
Good evening, Dominic. Yes, with the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. I'll make this quick. Uh, no main breaks in the month of October to report. No active construction. Uh, following up on last month, I circled around the block on my way here, and it appears that the, uh, portion of Kohio that they repaired the water main seems to have been repaved and fixed. So as usual, if anybody sees anything, any concerns, uh, feel free to reach out to me. Catch me in the back. Uh, just a real quick general announcement. The Board of Water Supply is happy to announce the launch of our 2024 poetry and poster contest. So for those who have kids or relatives with kids, the poetry portion is open to kids in grades seven through twelve, and the poster art contest is for kids in grades K through six. This year's theme is our water, our home. And the deadline for entries is February twenty-eighth, 2024. Uh, there's a bunch of information on our website, boardofwatersupply.com/wcwcontest. And at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions on behalf of the Board of Water Supply.
Questions for Board of Water Supply? Dominic, thank you for all you do for us across the year.
Yeah, I just wanted to make another quick announcement, just reminding myself. Uh, forecasts are looking at a dry winter. You know, there's a strong El Nino forecast for this winter. Uh, we're on the tail end of a very hot, very dry summer. So, you know, water recharge has been low. So as usual, you know, I say it every time I'm up here, please conserve water, use mindfully. Uh, remind your friends, neighbors, family to, you know, exercise best judgment in how they use water, so.
Right, very good advice. Please do it. Thank you, Dominic. Uh, I think back in July, Jeff Mers made a motion to use WebEx as our hybrid for our meetings. It was a three-month, uh, test. Uh, would you like to extend that test?
I don't remember requesting WebEx. I mean, I, yeah, I think it's...
That's the city's website.
Okay. Um, you can maybe speak to, I'm, I have my opinion on it, but you were the one who...
I thought you voted no for WebEx. But I've actually, I think, motioned it, and then I believe Daniel seconded it. Is that correct? For the, um, WebEx? I'm trying.
I'm sorry, I...
So, um, so, yeah, so we should, so are you saying that we have to make a motion every three months? Is that the question?
I'd like a motion from somebody to extend it or terminate it.
Chair, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to keep WebEx permanently.
Do I have a second? I've got three seconds. Okay. Any discussion on keeping hybrid meetings for the duration of this year?
I'll speak briefly in favor of my motion. Chair? Yeah. I'm sorry. I'll speak briefly in favor of my motion.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, you know, I think, I think when I spoke on this, I agree. I mean, I was in favor of it originally. Um, this is our door for people to attend. And the more people that attend this meeting, the more powerful we'll be as a group. One thing that I would like to ask moving forward is that we have some sort of announcement as to the amount of people online. Because I've realized in the past few months, I know people are there, but is it two? Is it twenty? Is it thirty? I remember I had watched online meetings previously before serving on the board, and there was upwards of twenty, thirty people sometimes. So I'd be curious to have more information throughout the meeting as to, even if it's an announcement at the end, how many people were online. Thank you.
Don't we point to that? Sure.
How many people are online right now?
Right now, we have six. Uh, but, yeah, whoever the neighborhood assistant is, as long as this is still going on, hybrid meetings, then, yeah, just ask the person at the end of the meeting, and they'll tell you, or at the beginning. We tend to lose some towards the end of the meeting. And I did just want to clarify the motion. Um, you said permanently, um, but I think the most realistic would be for the remainder of this term.
Okay, I appreciate, I'll...
Which would be till June thirtieth, 2025.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. So moved is said. I just have a question is, if board members aren't in Hawaii, say, we're out of state or somewhere else, can we join and be part of, uh, be part of the board remotely?
Absolutely. Any other discussion?
No, just to say that I, I think that this, we agreed to kind of test it out, and I think what it showed was that it worked pretty well and that, and that whatever concerns people may have had didn't really materialize in terms of fewer people coming to the meetings or things. So I don't think it's diminished our participation in any way. And I do think that it has enhanced our ability to connect with the community. So I, I mean, I think it's been a successful program.
Mr. Mers?
Yeah, I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I think if everybody thinks we should continue it, I'll vote for it. Um, I, I personally, I'd like to encourage people, if you can come in person, uh, please do. It's, to me, it's, it feels different. It looks different. Um, there's a delay with this. We've all been on these Zoom calls. They're not the same as being in person. I'm not going to force anyone. We can't, I think this is great, we can do remote. But I would just encourage the public and certainly all of us elected officials, show up in person when you can. For me, it carries more weight.
Any discussion? Yeah, please.
Um, so one thing I'd like to add up, I'm really happy about WebEx because, um, one of our members, actually, God bless her, she is on the mainland taking care of her parents. And she's been a member for years. And had it not been for WebEx, she would not be allowed to be on this board. So I, that was one thing with WebEx, and plus, when people are ill. Um, we had another member who's been here on the board for years, was ill one day, but was able to participate via WebEx. So I'm very grateful. Uh, thank you for your tax dollars to pay for it.
Thank you. Do we have any more discussion on the matter? I'd like to take a vote if we could. So the motion is to extend the hybrid meeting, uh, done by this, uh, board till the end of our current term of June thirtieth, 2024, I believe. Although, okay, any, uh, show of hands, all in favor? Any opposed? A show unanimous of people, and we have nobody online, do we? Okay, Secretary Minutes. Do we have corrections to minutes for, uh, August, September, or October?
So actually, um, to clarify, I actually spoke with, um, the other secretaries. And it's interesting that I am the only secretary that has to submit a clean copy. So before it was, if you saw an error, you could tell the NCO, say, hey, uh, this was misrepresented, please correct it. So after one of our meetings, I actually noticed that there were three errors because it was sent to me, and they asked me, could you please correct it? So I noticed that the second motion was wrong, wrong person was stated. There was a wrong tally for the votes. And also dialogue was added to explain why Chair for me had adjusted the agenda. So I sent it and said, it actually gave the exact timestamp. So unfortunately, um, only two of the corrections were made. So I said once again, these are factual corrections. These aren't subjective. These aren't, these is what actually happened, and you can see it recorded. So at, and I had to fight for it. So almost like punitively, now I have to, if I see something that's wrong, I have to rewrite the whole thing and submit a clean copy and then move forward from that. So that is my issue with it. And then I was told by the secret, yes, secretary that, um, it is the duty of the board to make sure the meetings are accurate. And that is correct. That is the sunshine law. However, there is also an administrative responsibility, which is the NCO. They were formed just to help neighborhood boards. So, um, luckily, we actually have a, a new NA moving forward. But I, so I actually submitted meeting minutes for September. I saw that she did not upload it to the Google Drive, so won't be able to vote on that. And actually, for the last, um, month, what I'm doing moving forward is because we do have apps now that will actually transcribe. I'm actually transcribing, um, the meeting minutes. So that way, there's any, there's not bias, there's not, um, like favoritism towards one bill versus another. Because it has, does become more subjective. And I noticed that some people are, uh, report like written out, and some people are ignored. And so I think having a full transcript will be beneficial.
Oh, no. Yeah, Patrick?
We have never had a problem with the minutes prior to your taking the position of secretary. Are you unhappy? And perhaps we should elect a different secretary?
Uh, great.
I say it, but I was beginning, I mean, I'm fond of you, but the minutes... Oh. For twenty years, the minutes were never a problem. Now, all of a sudden, we're three months behind on the minutes. The neighborhood assistant...
Here, could I?
...pends out the minutes every month, and we vote on it. Now, for some reason, we're still, we're still trying to figure out the August minutes.
I think you recognize me, Chair. I don't mean to interrupt the Vice Chair, but I think I was recognized. You did recognize me, Chair, correct? Okay. So, and I know, I don't want to, um, step over the Vice Chair, but I think it's what's very important to everybody in this room is that there are three meeting minutes from the last three months that have factual incorrect information regarding votes, motions and votes that are glaring. And I brought up one at the, uh, two meetings ago, last meeting. And there's another one that would be there for this meeting. I'm sorry, I haven't had time to go in detail on the last two. I did the detailed corrections for the previous, for, was it August, correct? Um, I, I provided that by email with the detailed corrections, but they're factual vote change, um, changes that need to be done where somebody said a vote was, uh, different than it actually was, the number of people, if it passed, if it failed. These are glaring mistakes of factual votes. And I think everybody's vote counts, and everybody in this room knows when you go to vote for an election, the vote counts. Ms. Worth has nothing to do with those mistakes. Those are errors and mistakes that were made by the person that created that original agenda, which she did not do. That would have been the NA. And I have concerns regarding our NAs, not this gentleman right here, but, um, not Dylan, but hopefully Dylan and I are working on some other problems that we see. And I'm hoping that we can get to resolutions going forward. But what I suggest right now is that we defer all of the meeting minutes. I will spend my Christmas vacation if I have to, so we get this all squared away in January, to provide all the corrections that we need to have. And I really don't want anyone's credibility or their character to be diminished in any way at these board meetings. It's very concerning to me what I'm seeing right now.
Yes.
So just to be clear, um, the meeting minutes, if you looked at how they were with the prior, um, NA, they were very different. And now they've switched over to having summaries. So, so that was one of the issues. And you're right, I am not happy. When things aren't followed by the law, when people are not treated equally, I will take time and I will fight it. And people might scoff at me, say I'm unhappy, or say I'm taking up too much time at the meetings. But I will fight for equality for everyone. And when I actually do submit a clean copy, I actually did exactly what you wanted. She didn't even accept it. So how can you say that I'm the fault, at fault here? It's my problem.
All I've been saying is that, literally a month ago, after the last meeting, I, I followed up at the, at the request of the Chair to find out what happened to the minutes from like two meetings ago, and I never heard back from you. And here we are now, now here we are, now a month later, and there's still no minutes. And so I don't know what you've...
If I submit it...
Excuse me.
I don't know what you've been doing it. So it's not a question of your character. I'm just wondering, like, what the heck is going on with these minutes? And, and why is it three months out? And what have you been doing or not doing? And why is it so freaking complicated?
Point of correction, point of correction. Just so you know, I did submit it to, I don't have access to the Google Drive. I was denied access, even though I'm secretary. If I submit it and it is not uploaded by the prior NA, who's no longer with us, that is not my fault. And to say that I'm the problem, I'm the one, and I, and even if I send, I can only send the minutes. So the sunshine law, actually before this board was violating the sunshine law right and left. So I can't send the minutes to, it has to go into the Google Drive at the same time, so everyone can see it.
Sarah and the board members, I'm not going to get into this, this, this back and forth. What I would like to do, can you make an appointment with Robert Whitso to meet with our secretary and see if this can be resolved?
Yeah, so I can try and set up a meeting. Um, but just so we're clear, the minutes have changed. They are now being referred to as written summary for video record, and that is a legal thing to do. The law allows a board to either have full written minutes, which is what the board was used to, six to eight pages, not a transcript, but close to it. Now, because of technology, you can use a video recording, which we, our office feels is the most accurate representation of the meeting because we just heard several lengthy debates. That's all going to be on the video. And tomorrow, this video is going to be on our YouTube page. The, the link to that will be on the next written summary, the minutes. So we're making everything very accessible, transparent. That's the point. Regarding how this works, our office will draft the written summary for video record as a courtesy, because we understand the load that that takes off of the board as volunteers. So what we do is we draft them, we send them to the secretary. The secretary, then, if they have changes, just edit the document and send it back to us. And that is the version that will be sent out with the agenda that's prepared by the Chair. And then it comes to the board. You guys can make any changes, or you can adopt it as it was circulated by myself and the secretary. Um, so that's what we do. I can entertain any quick questions.
Can we get that list of changes before the board meeting? So that we don't just come here and it's like, change this, change this, let's vote? Or Greg, can you put a list together for us? So we don't all have to go re-watch ten hours of tape?
I'm certain that can be done, but I would like you to talk to his boss. You. I would like you to talk to his boss and resolve the issue with them. If you need my assistance, let me know. But I'm, no, we've gone three months, and I think there's some misunderstandings. I think there's new, new technology being used, and I'd like to move on with the meeting. So I would ask you to make that appointment with her. Thank you, everybody. Citizens' Concerns, Things Not on the Agenda. Go ahead. Yes, please use the mics on this side of the room so we don't get feedback, if you would. Thank you. This is a brief update on the way-too-early-morning trash pickup issue. Managing Director Michael Formby held an important meeting yesterday about this issue. We are very grateful for both his and Mayor Rick Blangiardi's efforts, understanding and interest in assisting our community to resolve this issue. We are also grateful to Senator Sharon Morawaki, who is holding a Zoom meeting this Thursday about this issue. Invited will be representatives of Honolulu Disposal Service and West Oahu Aggregate, among others. Very early this morning, I drove through Waikiki to briefly observe the trash pickup activity of those private refuse haulers. At 3:30 AM, a West Oahu Aggregate vehicle was on Ho'bron Lane near the intersection of Alamoana Boulevard and emptying a dumpster. At the same time, a Honolulu disposal service vehicle that was carrying a dumpster turned from Alamoana Boulevard onto Ho'bron Lane and proceeded to make a right turn and go onto Aina Road. There were four dumpsters already lined up on Aina Road. As I ended my observations at 3:50 AM, a West Oahu Aggregate vehicle was on Aina Road emptying a dumpster. I wondered who in our neighborhood was being impacted even earlier than 3:30 AM when I first encountered these workers. Impeccability means to focus one's attention, to concentrate one's will on a particular goal or desire. Do not let it falter. Do not let it wander, but to hold it steady and strong. Our grassroots movement will continue to be impeccable in our ongoing desire to end the abuse and to honor the dignity of all residents who are impacted by this issue. We will continue to strongly urge all Honolulu City Council members to accelerate their efforts to introduce and pass a bill protecting all residents from the serious harmful health impacts of this way-too-early-morning activity. Finally, I, we encourage this board, as well as all residents in Waikiki and elsewhere, who have voiced their concerns, to continue their efforts and to be impeccable in their own actions to end this injustice. Thank you. Thank you. I forgot. I forgot to remind our speakers, on our agenda, we have a two-and-a-half-minute, uh, time limit on speaking. Thank you. Anybody else with a concern? Jacob?
Thank you, Chair Finley. Um, I just want to say that, you know, in the past three years, right, ever since the pandemic broke out in 2020, Hawaii's taken quite a beating, right? It's just been one thing after another. We live in profoundly serious times, and I would encourage all of our elected and appointed officials attending tonight, encourage the Neighborhood Board that going forward, we don't have time to waste. There's crises in Hawaii, there's, you know, crises abroad impacting us here. And we definitely need to be more profoundly serious in addressing what's going on. It's too expensive to live in Hawaii. Food costs too much, housing costs too much. There's, our infrastructure's crumbling all around us. And everything just keeps piling on top of each other. So as we go forward for the year, as we start a new year and a couple of months here, I hope we can all resolve to be more serious and more forthright about what needs doing, because there's a lot that needs doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Any other concerns, items not on the agenda? Just a second, John. Let the lady behind you go first.
Aloha, my name is Brianna Donnelly, and I work with Dr. Miku at the Center for Resilient Neighborhoods, and also known as Serene. I am coming here with an update, uh, from the Oahu Community Resilience Hub Network Project, also known as Action Fifteen from the Ola Resilience Strategy. Uh, we have worked across all eight sustainable planning regions, and we've identified a hundred fifty-six possible hub locations on Oahu. We've hosted one hundred and ten engagement events, and those, we've had sixteen region neighborhood level workshops with some of these. And on this Thursday, November sixteenth, we'll have a webinar with the, um, all of the updates. The final report will be... And on this Thursday, November 16th, we'll have a webinar with the, um, all of the updates. The final report will be, uh, uh, shared. All along, within a few weeks, it'll be shared on the city's CCSR results, because we also work with the Honolulu Office of Climate Change, Sustainability, and Resilience. I want to let you know about the webinar. I also want to let you know we have other, um, workshops and workdays. This Saturday, we'll be at the Locoea Anya Base Resilience. We're doing a workshop in North Shore. And then on December 6th at 5:30, we are doing the Moiliuli Community and Climate Resilience Hub Workshop. So I have some information, and if you're interested, you can sign your name. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this clarification? Of what you just said?
I actually just would like, more housekeeping. Um, because people have their speeches written out and they have information in flyers, could you please add that to the Google Drive?
If anyone wants, um, yeah, their speeches, testimony, anything like that. I have business cards on the back table in a clear box. Uh, please email them to me and I'll put them on the Google Drive that is the boards. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi Chair, this is the group actually that I requested to be put on agenda for either this meeting or the January meeting. So hopefully we'll be able to just see a short presentation. And just to clarify, it's environmental sustainability and also emergency preparedness that they're doing. They had presented to the Kekua Council previously. So hopefully we can get them on for a short presentation in January if possible.
I don't know. I think Dr. Carl Kim already did this several years ago, and he's got a whole division at UH that does this, but I guess it's competing thesis is going on here. We'll see. Anybody else? Yeah.
Hi, thank you. Um, my first my first meeting here. Problem is, there was a very personal family member that got assaulted in front of the 7-Eleven on Aina Road in Kalakaua. That has been a very major issue in that corner of that store. I would like to, and you do know, unless you haven't been following the news, there's lawsuits and there's all kinds of stuff going on. And as much trouble as that little 7-Eleven is, is harboring a lot of drugs, a lot of drug activities, and very, very bad activities going on. I, at this point, and thank you for listening. I don't know how to go about doing this, but I think I would definitely like to see if I can do some kind of petition to shut down the 7-Eleven on the corner of Aina Road and Kalakaua. I, I'm here because I called yesterday and they said you have a meeting every second Tuesday. I don't know how this all worked, but the assault that happened to somebody I know is so bad that they could, that person would have died. Um, I don't know how to go about cleaning up that corner. Um, I don't know what I need to do in order to petition to get 7-Eleven shut down. There's two 7-Eleven there, if you know the corner. And it just, so I don't know what to say except for the fact that I wish I could make a difference and that I would like to see that being shut down. Um, there's so many bad things, guy chopping out the people's hand. There's all kinds of stuff going on there all night long, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days out of the year. And it is so bad. And I don't, I'd like to stop spearhead something and I, I'd love to shut down that 7-Eleven. I know they're giants. I know they got money, but I don't know what to do except for the fact that make that place safe. Thank you.
Chair Waters, could you speak to her about that issue? This gentleman in the corner will be happy to speak to you about that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hi, everybody. Uh, just want to give everybody an update with what I think is the big elephant in the, in our community, and that is the ACLU lawsuit against the city regarding the homeless. Um, just to summarize, the ACLU is suing Honolulu for cruel and unusual punishment of the homeless for arresting and citing people for camping, sleeping on the sidewalk, being in park after hours, and so on and so forth. If the ACLU prevails, that means that homeless people can live and hang out wherever they want, 24 hours a day. Uh, right now, the judge has not ruled on an emergency injunction. He might rule on that within the next couple of weeks. If he rules on that, it won't be until our next meeting that we will know what, what happened, but it will be a disaster. There is one ray of hope here, and that is that this is all based on the availability of shelter beds for, for the community. And we all know that we don't have enough shelter beds for all the people living out on the streets, but the research by our own DIDE people, Business Improvement District, and the research in Portland, Oregon are identical. That's 75% or more of the people living in the streets decline any offer for help. So if you take that, 75%, well, we have 25% who want help, and we do have enough beds for those people. And Connie Mitchell, the head of IHS, has testified. Anybody who wants a bed here will get a bed. They don't throw people out in the streets. So we'll see what happens here, but I will tell you, if the ACLU prevails on this, we're in big trouble. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience with a concern that is not on the agenda? Don't see anything that's not anybody's hand. Okay, we will move on to public events. And because this is November, November 23rd, the at the Honolulu Marathon Clinic 10-mile run, but it's not the marathon itself, it's the clinic. That would be November, Thursday, November 23rd, uh, 6:00 PM, or 6:00 AM to 9:30 AM. On Friday, November 24th, uh, 6:00 to 9, 6:30 to 9:00 PM will be the Waikiki Holiday Parade. Uh, Sunday, December 3rd, 10:30 AM to noon, uh, Street Bikers United Toys for Tots Caravan, have a lot of motorcycles carrying toys down, uh, Waikiki. Thursday, December 7th, 5:30 to 7:30 PM will be the annual Pearl Harbor Anniversary Parade. Saturday, December 9th, 5:30 to 8:30 AM will be the annual Merry Mile Run. That is part of the Honolulu Marathon. Monday, sorry, Sunday, December 10th, 2:30 AM to 4:00 PM in various areas. You can get the map online, is the Honolulu Marathon. Monday, January 15th, 8:30 AM to 12:30, uh, noon, the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. And the city has not posted the 2024, uh, list of street events. Applications for liquor licenses. Wow, we have the Crazy Honu Kai Inc., part of Bluefish, Hawaii, 226 Lower Street. And this again is a special general license from October 23rd till January 24th, uh, because I think the Liquor Commission is having a hard time keeping up with liquor licenses right now, so they're granting specials until they can catch up. Uh, December 7th, uh, Waikiki Korean Barbecue, 2250 Kalakaua, Category 1, which means they close by 2:00 AM and do not have dancing, singing, and stuff like that. So that's all of the liquor licenses that I know about. If you have concerns about any of these licenses, you can chat with the, with the Liquor Commission, and I'm sure they'll be happy to take your inputs. Elected officials, NOLA, are you here with us tonight? Oh, there she is. Representing Major Blangiardi, uh, Ma- Mayor Blangiardi, just promoted him, darn it. Uh, we have NOLA.
Good evening, Chair Finley and members of the neighborhood board and residents. Thanks for having me. It's great to be here. Um, I, I guess I want to just give a couple of highlights from the mayor's newsletter this month. And, um, one of the exciting things, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the, the lark stones on Koheo Beach, but on October 24th, the mayor, um, participated in a, in a blessing and an availing of a, um, a really neat plaque that provides information about the stones. But there's a wonderful history about those. And so, um, I just wanted to give a really short update about, about the history of these. Um, I, I think it's something that everyone here would be interested in. And in particular, now we have with the plaque and the QR code that's on the plaque, all the visitors can, can scan the QR code and learn about the history of the stones. But basically, um, the, the two boulders have stood on the, the Koheo Beach area. Um, they've been there for centuries, but, um, according to legend, native Hawaiians hauled the boulders from Kaumaki to Waikiki as a tribute to four gender fluid or Mahu Tahitians who traveled to Hawaii and shared their healing powers and wisdom. And transporting the stones to Waikiki so long ago was a tremendous effort matched only by the healers' tremendous contributions. So, um, the, the QR code directs visitors and local residents to www.kapaimahu.info, K-A-P-A-E-M-A-H-U. And, um, it gives information about the, this interesting legend and history. So we're really excited about that, and we, we encourage everybody to go, go and take a look at that. Um, in other news, the mayor has, uh, the mayor's housing office has renewed their commitment. They've rolled out a, a big housing, affordable housing plan, um, to develop 18,000 units between, um, the fiscal year 2022, which was, uh, two years ago, and 2029. So you'll probably see the mayor on the news, um, every, as often as he can, uh, basically funding and supporting, uh, affordable housing units for residents so that we, we really just kind of address the issue of, of people not being able to stay in their homes and not being able to find affordable housing. So that's, it's quite a commitment, and, um, it is one of his highest priorities for, for the term for him, for the mayor. Um, uh, one of the, uh, one of the, um, things that has come out of the, the wildfires on Lahaina has been that we have taken a, uh, much more serious look at the wildfire issues. I mean, I think there have been a couple recently, um, on the island, in the mountains, but, um, the mayor has convened a 20 department, uh, task force to look at the wildfire and the potential issues, um, to make sure that what happened on Maui does not happen here. And if it does happen, that we are, we are very prepared. So, um, basically, uh, there were, we're working with federal and state partners to conduct this evaluation. And, um, if, if you notice, there have been different kinds of warnings going on this week. There's been fire dry, and we have this now kind of hazardous fire warning for dry areas and dry when it's really windy. So I think the city, hopefully the city and the state and the island will be more prepared after the, um, the disaster that happened on Maui. Um, another exciting piece of news we have is that we just received a million dollars from the Bloomberg Harvard, um, Bloomberg Foundation for Cities for funding for public art across Honolulu. So there'll be a number of, um, funded public art installations across the, across the island, and hopefully one in Waikiki. So if you want one in Waikiki, you can let the mayor know. Um, okay, so just following up on some of the issues that were raised last, last month, um, the feral chickens. So Member Mizakian asked about alternative to euthanizing feral chickens. So, you know, it is kind of a, an issue for the island, and we want to make sure that we, you know, can address the challenge. Um, it's the Customers or Services Department, and their response is that euthanizing chickens is, um, you know, has been proven to be the most humane way to address the challenge. And the alternative is to find some way for people to house or adopt the chickens, which unfortunately we just don't, the city doesn't have the capacity to do that, and we haven't identified any other way to manage the, the feral chicken, the growing feral chicken population. So, um, I'm not sure that's the best answer, but it is kind of what we are able to do. And we, we, unfortunately, we, for every, you know, comment that we have about the chickens that's concerned about them, we get so many complaints about too many chickens. So that, that's kind of an issue for us, you know, the balance. Um, the Neighborhood Commission, Member Worth asked if there could be more hiring done for the Neighborhood Commission office, especially Neighborhood Assistants. Um, and the Neighborhood Commission responded, you know, mahalo for your concern to Ms. Worth. They said they are continuing to advertise the Neighborhood Assistant positions through Facebook and Instagram, and they've tried to do hiring fairs and public outreach. As you know, we, as you can see, we've lost our, um, Neighborhood Board Assistant Judy Ann Calhoney Smith, who has left for, um, left the city for another opportunity. So, um, we are looking for people interested in these positions. And, and they gave me an email, nco@honolulu.gov. If anybody is interested, or if you know of anyone who is interested, please encourage them to reach out to us. Um, former member Jacob Winzick asked about considerations for the Neighborhood Commission, and the NCO again asked, um, gave that same email address, nco@honolulu.gov. Um, there's a, and also a, an address that, that we can put in the newsletter and the minutes for, um, if you want to mail your resume, if anyone is interested. But, um, of course, we would consider all people interested in working for the city for the NCO Neighborhood Board Commission. And I think that's about it for this month.
Questions for the mayor? Yes.
So, um, hi, sorry. Thank you for following up. You're really great at that. I always appreciate it. So, um, I attended a neighborhood, uh, the commission meeting, and one of the issues is ethics. So you're right, I'm kind of a stickler for the rules and I'm very unhappy with not follows. I hate corruption. So I went to the, uh, Neighborhood Commission, I said, hey, um, I called the Ethics Commission because there is an issue with, um, an organization giving complimentary, complimentary tickets to all the board members and the value is $200. Is that an ethical issue? So the Ethics Commission said, since we're not elected officials, they have no purview over us. So I was like, well, jucks, who do I ask? So I asked the Commission. They referred me back to Lloyd. I emailed Lloyd and he was in attendance at that meeting, so he heard the Commission say, ask Lloyd. Um, I emailed him. He just told me, if you have a problem, file a complaint. But I was like, I don't know if I have a problem. That's the problem. So where do we find guidance? So, um, that was one of my, it's an America dress that because when Lloyd, uh, I had a few issues, uh, he said the Neighborhood Commission does not have any authority over him, does not have any authority over the Neighborhood Commission Office. So mayor is the one who appointed or selected him. Is that correct? So is he, I'm trying to figure out who does have authority over, uh, is it the mayor or is it, would you know? Or if you could follow up and ask, I'm just trying to figure out who do I?
Yeah, we can, I can follow up. I mean, I think as the Ethics Commission mentioned, the, the Ethics Commission, you know, their rules and regulations govern elected officials and, um, employees of the city and county. And that's pretty much their purview. They are under the corporate counsel. Um, I think for people that are volunteers, I don't think their rules apply. Otherwise, it would be very difficult to get people to volunteer to, to serve on, on commissions and boards for the city. But as But is, I believe that I can, I will double check and I will see if um, what kind of rules apply to, I mean, there's probably some guidelines and rules for people who's around boards and commissions. But I don't think it's the same set of rules and regulations that apply to employees.
Point of clarification? Uh, I just, just a, just a question, do you mind that um, be asked? Is it a, can you follow up on that? And also if there's an issue with who has purview or authority over the E S secretary? That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
I'm sorry, which, which position?
Oh, at the E S secretary, the NCO, who does have authority over that position?
Oh, executive.
Oh, sorry. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about the one million dollar public art donation. Is it possible to use some of that money for existing structures in the city? For example, right in front of the library and the fire station, that fountain hasn't been working for years. And it's a beautiful work of art that adds a lot of value to the entrance of Waikiki. Do you know if we can use money in that regard?
That I don't know, but um, there's a, I can give you, it, it's, it's being um, it's being run by the mayor's office of culture and arts. So um, Mocha, and you could, you could reach out to them. Let's see, I guess I don't have contact information here. But um, Eli Trask O'Connell is the new Mocha Director of Culture and Arts. And she's gonna be um, doing the installations. Apparently they're installations across the island. So um, could we possibly get, we could get you some contact information for the Mocha Executive Director? And you can reach out to her and ask her um, if there have, if the million dollars has already been um, allocated or what the status is of the projects.
Michael?
Hi, NOLA. My question's quite different and it involves an electrical connection here in Waikiki. It's just across the street in front of the Pa'ouakalani Apartments. And for the last year, there's been a high voltage connection coming out of a concrete hatch in the asphalt pavement to up about ten to twelve feet high and then suspended across to that apartment building and attached into the metering system for that building. And it's been there for a year and it can't be code compliant. So it just seems like that's a danger to, and into the health, safety and welfare of all of us around here. So if there's anything we can do to learn about that, that'd be great.
The location again?
Pa'ouakalani Apartments and it's either, I believe it's number one eighty or it could be two hundred. I could always email you the exact.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just across the street. It's at the corner of Kohio, Pa'ouakalani. It's the four or five story walk-up.
Okay.
Yeah. It's really evident when you get through that intersection. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Jacob?
Thank you for the response, NOLA. I really appreciate it. Um, I'm glad that the mayor is part of his centerpiece for, agenda for next year is tackling affordable housing, right? It is too expensive to live in Honolulu. It's a million dollars to buy a home. It is beyond unaffordable. We need more housing. We need more homeless shelters, transitional housing. And mayor should go radical, right? Go big or go home. Let's get permitting reform, zoning reform, mixed-use zoning, higher density in the urban core of Honolulu. Let's raise the uh, building height restrictions. We live in a city, so please, I'm encouraged, I'll be your biggest show if we can get that done. And then I would like to bring up um, just some police concerns, right? We heard from a resident earlier today about uh, crime over at the seven-elevens further down Kalakaua there. You know, I live right across the street from them. They've been problem areas for years. And you know, Chinatown is able to have twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five HPD foot patrols. And I think we need the mayor's intervention for not just Waikiki, but the entire urban core to move HPD strategically in a direction of community-based policing of twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five foot patrols. Waikiki desperately needs it. We've made significant progress in tackling crime, but we gotta lock in those gains and we gotta keep getting at the problem. It is still not fully addressed. Thank you.
Okay.
Alina, take another two, please.
Oh, okay, okay.
Hi, NOLA. I just uh, uh, once again want to recognize Mayor Rick Blangiardi and Managing Director Michael Formby for their ongoing efforts in helping our community to end this uh, issue of uh, way too early morning trash pickup. He is the first mayor to give this issue the very serious attention that it deserves. And also Michael Formby is the first managing director to do the same. Their actions are highly commendable and we are very, very grateful for all their efforts. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll pass it on, thank you.
Don't see, yes. Jim, I didn't see you right there.
Good evening. Um, in regards to affordable housing, um, one of the things that happened in Lahaina after the fire was there was a nonprofit group that came in and on their own dime, put up two hundred and forty ADUs, basically. And they brought them in from Hungary. I talked to Scott about this. He said he was gonna look into it. They're ten thousand dollars apiece. They're quality-built and they're constructed in an hour and a half. I strongly encourage Rick and Mr. Waters to maybe look at this and make it part of the ADU. And my property, I'll be the first to be the test for it. Ten thousand dollars. You're talking about affordable housing. And the price on an affordable unit is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's considered affordable. And there's a lot of properties, especially up in Kaimuki. They're basically two hundred to three hundred square feet. And you can, like, they're like a Lego set. You can add on if you want, whatever. But ten thousand dollars. This nonprofit in Maui did it all on their own. They created a little village. It's almost done. Go on the website and check it out. If we're serious about affordable housing, I think ten thousand dollars is pretty affordable. I've never seen anything else, and it, they're, it's quality product. So I encourage everybody to go on. They have a YouTube, they show the whole map in Lahaina. And they basically, we could do that here. And I'm also one for um, no growth on Oahu. Everybody wants to grow this island. I think there's too many people on this island. I shouldn't, I don't think we should encourage more people to come here. When I first came to Hawaii, there were three hundred thousand people on Oahu. Three hundred thousand. I thought it was crowded then. So I might be the only one, but I'm not a proponent for growing anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Tim, what was the name of the nonprofit or do you know the, the, okay?
I.
Oh, Scott. Oh, okay.
Don't see any other hands. Yes.
Talking about uh, affordable housing, two oh one H is uh, like using a machete to do surgery. It's um, irresponsible. And I hope the neighborhood board will, will vote against things like the Kui Le place um, that have caused a lot of traffic in an already condensed area. Also, um, the, the fire in Lahaina uh, shows that we need traffic to keep moving. We can't have ambulances and fire trucks delayed uh, to address a fire. Also, there's a limited amount of water uh, here. And we do need to, to address that when it comes to um, building uh, and not destroy any uh, land that's saturating uh, and, and feeding our aquifers. Also, affordable housing should be built west of the airport, not in town, so that they'll utilize the rail line that, that we're spending millions of dollars to build. Thank you.
Thank you. Lady in the back with bicycle.
So once again, I'm here to complain. Sorry. The bike lanes still have not been restriped on Kalakaua. It is a dangerous situation. The second thing is on Koa Avenue, there are two businesses that encroach on the sidewalk. There's no way anyone with a wheelchair could pass by. I'm not a big person. I often have to shimmy past the chairs, the seating area for the restaurant, Short Fire, as well as the surf shop, which puts up a sandwich board and gives you about eighteen inches of space on that sidewalk. What can be done about that? I know that um, there's got to be Americans uh, Disabilities Act. That's something that I could contact, but I've searched, haven't come up with anything.
Will we continue it?
NOLA, I don't see anybody waving at me. You waved. I asked them early. Oh, names for minutes? Okay, if. I'm sorry, if, if you speak, please let us know who you are. Thank you. Uh, NOLA, thank you very much. I'm sure you have more.
Thank you. Make him happy holidays, gentlemen.
Chair Waters, City Council Chair?
Well, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the board and members of the public, good evening. And I started off, just wanted to talk about three things that I thought was really important to this community. But as I'm sitting through the meeting, I worked up to ten. But you know, number one, the Alaway flood mitigation project. I'm just want to let you folks know, I'm keeping an eye on this because during the last meeting that the Army Corps of Engineers talked about five and six-foot walls along the Alaway Canal. And I know this board um, talked about this before. And I think we're in agreement that we don't want six-foot walls along the Alaway. It's just gonna be um, a place where we're feeding and the view plane is gonna be horrible. So I'll keep you informed when the next meeting is and what we can do to fight against that. My office, working with former council members, Kobayashi and Putinaga, we came up with a couple of different creative ideas that really work to mitigate the floods for Waikiki. Because ultimately, that's what we're trying to protect is Waikiki. But without those six-foot walls. Um, so we need to remain diligent and vigilant and monitor what the Army Corps of Engineers is doing. The second thing is the Alaway Canal Bridge. So the, the federal government is willing to pay for ninety percent of this bridge and we do a matching ten percent. And we talked about this for years and it's finally gonna happen. But I will tell you, and Dylan can probably um, confirm this, that other neighborhood boards, they don't want the bridge. And we may or may not have people online who monitor what happens here. Um, but you know, I want to just confirm that we are gonna stay steadfast. We want that bridge, right? Yeah, thank you. It's, it's a, alright. It's a, it's a footbridge and a bike bridge, right? It's not for cars. But especially after what happened in Lahaina. Could you imagine if there was a catastrophe, hurricane, fires or whatnot? There's only two ways out of Waikiki, as you all know. So this would, I believe, would be a great addition, the bridge. Third thing is uh, street usage of Kalakaua Avenue. And is Mr. Millwood here? I, I'm happy to meet with you in person to just get your perspective. But what the community is telling me is that we've been shutting down Kalakaua quite a bit. And I do have proposed legislation that I first gave to Department of Transportation Services. Then I gave to Corporation Council. And my staff uh, just told me today that Corporation Council finally got back to us with comments. We were in hearings all day today, so I wasn't able to see what, what Corporation Council's comments are. I know I promised to give it to you folks once I get that. I'm still happy to do that. Um, and then you folks can comment, including you, Mr. Millwood. Um, but I will tell you, the community has been really upset about how often the, the street has been closed down. So legislation is meant to um, address those concerns. You know, talking about affordable housing, right now, the primary urban core development plan is before the planning commission. This prime, this plan, basically, I believe, Jack, it's been for like ten years, yeah? It, it guides development for the next ten years of our city in the urban core. The urban core consists of Kahala, Diamond Head, Kapahulu, Waikiki, the Alaway area. And that's, that's in our neck of the woods. And it goes all the way through, I think, the whole city. I know one of the um, constituents just talked about how development should be, I guess, where did she say it was? West of the airport. But the primary urban center is actually from Kahala. But one of the things I, I represent Kahala, Kaimuki and uh, Kapahulu. And what they originally were gonna do was actually allow more density, Jacob, and more height. But I gotta tell you, people in Kahala don't want twenty-fifty-foot buildings in Kahala, nor Kapahulu. That was going to be allowed, folks. I know that's just outside of Waikiki. But in the primary urban core development plan, they were gonna allow buildings along um, Kapahulu Avenue. But meeting with the Diamond Head Neighborhood Board and the Kapahulu Neighborhood Board, they asked me to change that. So I'm, submit testimony to the planning commission. And every one of you can look at the plan itself. It is very thick. It's about an inch thick and it's a lot of reading. But it's super interesting reading and interest, and, and quick reading. And you can just look at the maps. They're all color-coded and you can determine and make your own assessment and testimony. And I encourage you folks to do that. Of course, in Waikiki, it already is dense and, and um, there are height limits. But in many places, interestingly, we have folks familiar with what's called the F A R, floor area ratio. I encourage you to look it up. In many places within Waikiki, the floor area ratio is a one. So that means you're only allowed a one-story building. Um, but anyway, it's worth, it's, it's worth looking at to see whether or not you want to increase that while protecting view planes. I think that's super important. Almost done. Unless you want to talk about this now. Um, I just have a couple more things I want to talk about. But um, I knew you'd be able to weigh in on that. Speaking of affordable housing, though, we have a twenty-five thousand unit shortage in the state of Hawaii. The bulk of that is on our island, right? I talk about this a lot. You know, I have uh, two kids and, and I'm one of six kids born and raised here. But all my siblings live on the mainland. They can't afford to live here, right? And terrifies me to think that my kids aren't gonna be able to live here either. And we gotta build more affordable housing. Primary. Primary, primary urban center is the perfect place to do this, by the way. Since I've been the Chair and the Mayor's been the Mayor, we actually have approved eight thousand units, of which six thousand or so are affordable. So one of the things we've been trying to do is, whenever a developer wants to build something, they have to build a percentage of affordable. But we're fighting because affordable is a relative term, right? I prefer workforce housing, keeping local people employed so that they can earn a decent living and be able to pay their mortgage or rent. Lately, the developers have been wanting to do rentals rather than fee simple, just because you could do it at eighty percent of their annual income and below, which really is workforce housing. The other testifier talked about the gift for the park. So that thousand-dollar gift is a, basically a statue donated by Incham, Korea, for Inha Park. Inha was a combination of Incham and Hawaii. Inha is a park on Beritania Street, and they donated the statue. I'm well aware of the fountain right at the bottom of the Aloei Canal. And the problem with that was the water feature. You know how long it took us to fix the other fountain over by Outrigger and the Elks Club? That took forever. So Parks Department is the one in charge of it. But I'd love to figure out what else, statue or some sort of art that would be really iconic and really cool to put there. And I'm willing to work with you folks. And I actually met with Moka, the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts, on that specific area. And the ADU idea, you can do that now as long as it meets the building code. So ADUs are allowed in residential areas. Accessory dwelling unit, that's what ADU stands for. But you can build that, connect it to your house. You apply to DPP for a permit, Jerry, and you have to comply with the building code, right? So I'm not sure if those ten thousand-dollar units you're talking about will comply with the building code. But if they do, have at it. Two oh one H projects were brought up. The two oh one H, it's Hawaii Revised Statutes, Chapter two zero one, subsection H. It's a state law. The state law says that the city and county have to act on these projects. Once it hits my desk within sixty days, if we don't act on it, then it's automatically approved. So those are those instances where we've been holding the developers' feet to the fire to try to get them to build even more affordable units. But the fact of the matter is, and I'm sure our Senator or Representative can address this, that it has to be changed through the legislature, not the City Council. And that's it. I'm available for questions.
Second. Board members first, Catherine.
Good evening, Chair Waters.
Hello.
The Aloei Harbor is in great disrepair and has been for years. And one of our constituents contacted me showing a video of a boat that's been sunk in the harbor for months. And it's attracting marine life, but it's also sitting there derelict. The docks are falling into the water. And now Ed Underwood is trying to have a secret meeting, but he got caught to change the fees for parking. Uh, I, I think that as the editorial in the paper states with the, a Friday, keep parking free at the Aloei Harbor should be considered. I don't think that the boaters need more respect, more expenses. They've already had their dockage rates raised. But the bathrooms are not working properly. The Harmer Master isn't in the office anymore. The docks are falling into the water. This is disgraceful. I hope you'll address that. Secondly.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, no.
Well, Aloei, unfortunately, I totally agree with you. And I used to, when I was younger, surf right out there, and I'd park over there myself. But unfortunately, the city doesn't have jurisdiction over the harbor. It's a state issue.
Okay.
But I'm happy to be your advocate and fight for you because I believe in what you believe in, that parking should be free.
Okay, I have addressed the Senator and the Representative. The abandoned building on the Aloei that you guys took over, what's happening there?
Oh, thank you. We haven't taken actual possession of it yet legally, in paper. The judge allowed us to put up a fence so that the illegal activity that was going on, hopefully, the fence stops that. But there's just one last hurdle. It's a legal thing, and it then should be ours. I, I, did Kat Pachner come and speak to this Board? You know, maybe we can get her back here because she was considering two things. One, knocking it down and turning it over to a developer to develop affordable housing. Or two, look at a developer who's willing to renovate the existing building. And the last, that's the last I heard from her that was happening. But I need to follow up for you folks, and I'll come back next, next month and let you know what she's decided to do. Thank you.
Oh, hello, sir. So, um, one, I have two questions.
Sure.
One is April Colaretti, is that how you pronounce it? Um, she was here two months ago, and she stated that she was going to submit a question that I had to the corp counsel. And so the question was, she stated that city and county has no jurisdiction, cannot put a law stating you can't, a private company, you know, anyone can't pick up garbage before six AM. She said that the city and county does not have the authority to do so. So she stated two months ago that she was going to submit that question. I actually emailed her to see, make sure she was going to follow up. She said she could not have the answer by last meeting, but, you know, this one, and she never responded. Did she talk to you about?
She did. After the meeting, she reported to me everything that we talked about. And we're going to submit that exact question to corp counsel, which we have a representative here. But I honestly, I apologize. I have to follow up to see whether or not corp counsel actually gave us that opinion. But I'm really curious to hear what the Mayor said because, you know, next time I meet with the Mayor, I'll ask him myself, but I fear.
So, sorry, my second question. So I, I hear you when you say, you know, you're worried that your kids are not going to be able to stay here. So my grandparents actually immigrated to the Big Island. Um, but my dad, who had a master's in English, could not make enough money to support a family of three. So we had to move to the mainland. And now I'm back trying again. And we keep talking about affordable housing. We need to make housing cheaper, having housing cheaper. Why aren't we making wages better? Why, there's so much money that comes into Hawaii, especially Waikiki, so much money is just not staying here. For example, I did some investigation. The Holiday Parade, that's actually managed by a mainland company, and the profits that they make go to Minnesota. They're not coming to us. And then that's, and then the other parade is a, is a company in Arizona. So why are these big parades, which, by the way, we taxpayers have to pay for, like closing the streets and so forth, because they're legacy events? Why, why is it that mainland people are organizing and keeping all the profits for events held here?
No, I completely agree. And I, I can't answer the question why the mainland companies are getting the permits to do this. I think everybody, probably the equal protection clause, everybody should be allowed to apply for it. I don't think we can limit it to residents. But to me, I'd love to see local people, you know, being able to get these permits rather than mainland companies.
Jeff?
Yeah, Chair, thanks for bringing up the PUC, Primary Urban Center Plan. People may not review it, but this is what should guide development. And you need to review it now. Anyone who's interested in reviewing it now, not two years from now, wants it approved. So now's the time to comment. I went to the meetings over the past year. I comment as a private citizen, not on behalf of the Board. I also heard some disturbing things from surrounding neighborhoods that just do not want any more housing, and they hide behind traffic and noise and the usual NIMBY stuff. We get it here in Waikiki because we're high-density. We walk, we use transit, we understand what it's like, multi-use. It's the surrounding neighborhoods would need to step up and increase their density, not with forty-story high-rises, but with appropriate mixed geos. So you don't have to drive everywhere. I pound on this every meeting, I'm going to continue to do it. But what I'm suggesting to everyone in this room, look at the PUC online now and review it. Because what I don't want to be sitting here two years from now, people say, I didn't know. And I didn't have a chance to review it, and why are they approving something? So I would just like everyone to, when these things are reviewable, review them. I'll be happy to guide you to where these documents are, but they need input now. And I think it's important these surrounding neighborhoods step up. Thanks.
That's awesome. Um, real quick. So it's before the Planning Commission. Geez, it might be tomorrow, actually. But the good news is, ultimately, once the Planning Commission is done, it comes to the City Council. So you get another bite of the apple through me and my office. But thank you so much for saying that because what Jeff just said is so important. And we actually do have a say in where and how we want our future to look. And you're right. To get more of a response from you guys, I talked about four-hundred-foot towers. But, you know, like across the Aloei, how about three, more three-story blockouts, right? And we can build them actually with Bill Seven fairly reasonably priced. But they don't have to be tall towers. But we have the ability to make that decision through this plan. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Hi. I, I know that a little later in the presentation, we have a permitted interaction group that Greg and Sarah, and it was a Chad. Or also, I know Greg and Sarah were working hard. So I would urge you to stick around and maybe listen to that. Look, as you know, I'm someone that has supported you from day one, and I still do. But I am, I do want to make sure that the, because I heard that the positions that you're articulating and advocating are in line with what the community is actually feeling. So, for example, you were saying that everybody wants these street closures. When we debated a few months ago your proposal on those street closures, I think a majority of the Board at that time did not support your bill. I abstained from the bill. And in response to that, half this Board abstained. I think it was, it was my, it's my own personal view that the residents are not complaining. I haven't ever, hardly ever seen a resident and complain about those block parties. To me, it's just the businesses that are squawking about it because they want to buy in fifty-dollar, a hundred-dollar steaks and thousand-dollar handbags, and they don't like tourists and locals enjoying free entertainment on the street. So to me, this was the business community pushing the City Council. And so, so when you come and say the residents are telling you that, I just think it's good to be clear. You know, conversely, I see someone like Carlino come here and ask all the time about the trash pickup. That's something people do complain. And so I'm hearing people come and complain about that, and yet I don't see the City Council acting on that. So I just want to put that out there and maybe, maybe have you think about whether the positions you're articulating and what you're advocating is really in line with the sentiment of the community because some of that may or may not be. So I think that's something to take a look at.
No, I appreciate that very much. And that's why one of the things I wanted to do before I actually introduced the street closure bill is run it by you folks. And then hopefully, you do take a vote on it.
Well, we didn't support it, I can tell you that.
Well, I wanted you to see the actual bill, right? We were talking about it in concept. But I'd like you to see the bill. As far as the garbage closure is, and we've talked about this before, I'd really like to see the individual buildings contact their provider and tell them, I don't want you to pick it up. Because if I make an ordinance like that, it'd be really hard just to do it just for Waikiki, right? It would be for the entire island, right? And I'm, again, I'm really curious to see what the, what the Mayor has to say.
Excuse me, there's a lady in line first, sir. We've got two people in the audience waiting to discuss.
Yeah, hi. My name is Fashafak. And I'm actually a member of the, let's call it LE neighborhood Board. So I just wanted to respond to your earlier comment. So, you know, as a Board member, I speak to a lot of people in my community. And we're certainly aware, there's a small but very vocal minority that is opposed to the bridge. But that's not representative, I don't think, of the tens of thousands of people who live in that neighborhood and voted in favor of the Board when they had the opportunity of the bridge, when they had the opportunity. So I just want to reiterate that there are so many people in that community and members of the Board that are very excited to see this bridge finally come to fruition after many years. It fulfills so many goals for our communities and for the city. You know, the original Waikiki Special District that calls for more access across the Aloei, the Complete Streets projects, the Vision Zero that, you know, advocates for safe crossings for pedestrians and bicycles. So wanted to.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Millwood?
Yes. Good evening. Hello, Mr. Waters.
Hi.
Just here, first of all, that thank you for acknowledging that we can have a meeting. I, you know, I was hoping to have it about six weeks ago when I contacted your office before the bill was moving along so much because I did hear about what you folks were looking to do. And we were hoping to have some other possible solutions before we just, before we just take the events from fifteen to twelve now down to three. I thought that was pretty drastic, especially when we see that maybe it's not as, there's not as much negative sentiment as it's been presented. You know, opinions can come out if they're not challenged, and everybody starts looking at opinions as fact after a while. You know, when, and I mentioned before, when Mr. Aggett had, on the news, said Millwood's, Millwood Ohana Productions events don't have that same kind of community give back. Where's the fact in that? You know, then in the last meeting, the reason I stood up and I was just sitting when he starts to say that our, our events attract a different crowd of people or there's some unsanitary conditions and all these imferences being made, and I don't know where the facts are. And yet, as Executive Director of Aloha Week Festival, I don't see how his events are any different than what we do, as well as if it affects the retailer so terribly. What about Aloha Week? What about Spam Jam? I'm not speaking negatively about those events. I'm just saying, we should all have the same fair shake at all this. The community sentiment, if we, during the events, we're doing opinion polls. Everybody loves it who attends these, except, like we're saying, we may find some of the businesses may not be as in favor because they feel it takes away. But we're not competing against those, those individual businesses. I would like to present a possible solution. To me, the lottery system's broken. It's outdated. So instead of just trying to figure out, let's do a lottery and have three events instead of ten or twelve, one of the things people are most upset about is when the events were happening back to back to back, three events in a week in a month. That's unacceptable. So we would, we would rather see maybe everyone agrees that one event a month, perhaps on the first Saturday or second Saturday of the month. That might be a better solution. And also, is it possible to go to concession or to bid to where, just like you have concessions on the beach and you have kiosks, what if we went to bid and one vendor who represents Hawaii Waikiki properly, professionally, was able to be the one that holds that? And then there wouldn't be any arguing and fights. These lottery systems, it's, again, it's outdated. It doesn't work, and I have some other things to say. So I came up originally to get the facts straight because I didn't have the majority of the events last year. Okay, so basically, now we do have events next year. They're the second Saturdays of the month on those months that apply, and not every month.
I appreciate that, Mr. Millwood. And I do intend to meet with you prior to the introduction, and I do want to give it to you folks. And, and I do intend to meet with you prior to bill introduction and I do want to give it to you folks. But one of the things we're contemplating is exactly what you said, one a month. So before you give up the mic, are you okay with one a month? And is the board okay with one a month?
Oh.
Just curious.
I, I, again, I, I'm saying from what I've heard, from what I've, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, somebody's behind you is saying this, so please continue.
Well, there's always going to be both sides to it, right? And it's always nice to present both sides. But what we've seen is the public really does enjoy these events. And once a month doesn't seem so terrible, especially if it's on the same weekend and it's something to be recognized. If it goes to lottery, there's no control over that. And I can understand why you'd be upset with March, the, the last two weekends of March, the first week in April, and they're back to back. Of course, I would be upset too, and that wasn't ever the intention, but that's what happens with the broken lottery system.
You know, it'd be great if we could use some of the revenues that are generated from these, uh, events and perhaps do what one of the constituents wanted with that statue at the, at the bottom of the Alawai Canal. Um, I know that you do donate money that, that, um, part of the problem.
Well, and actually we are, we're required now to donate more than fifty percent of our proceeds. Net proceeds, we're required by the city to donate more than fifty percent. That's unheard of in any industry, in any company. But once again, we accept and we've been doing it, but we continue to get beat up on. The Royal Hawaiian Shopping Center has a bias to show. They don't allow us to put a dumpster at the Royal Hawaiian Shopping Center for our events when everybody else can. But the person in charge of that decision was Sam Schenkes, the co-chair of the Aloha Week Festival. So you see, we continue to get beat up and I'm exposing this because it's, it is. I didn't say a word for years, but now it's kind of coming to a head. And I don't want, again, everyone just thinking it's Millwood, Millwood, when it really isn't, you know? We're just trying to hold these events and see what's fair.
I appreciate that and thank you so much. But just to be clear, you're not donating that fifty percent back to the city. You donated to the community.
To charities, exactly.
Right?
Local charities, yes, sir.
May I just suggest working with the board and figuring out what other charitable, um.
And perhaps that's where the, this bid process or being awarded the contract and that money could go.
How does that work? Do you get to decide who, who you donate to or does the city tell you where to donate?
No, we get to choose the charity of our choice, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair? I just wanted to bring up something I heard at the downtown Chinatown meeting, uh, earlier this month. They heard about all the contention on this issue and they were hoping that some events could go to Chinatown. So they kind of want you guys there just to consider.
I really appreciate that, Dylan. That's part of the bill as well. We're trying to encourage more.
I'll be very brief.
No, no.
Other areas.
Catherine, just a minute, let, let me finish with that. Go ahead. Hey, thank you. Yeah, uh, I'll be very brief. I, I've written over twenty thousand words on this issue that you have that anybody can access through a right to know request. Very unfortunate that you don't view this as an issue of abuse. For newborn children that need more sleep than adults to develop their brains, for the elderly at the end of life who deserve to live out the rest of their days with dignity. Second, uh, you say that the onus should be on the condominiums in their contract with the, uh, trash companies. Okay, what if they ask the trash companies to not come at six o'clock and the trash companies deny it? All right. What if the condominium say, okay, we're going to put our trash on the sidewalk? We're going to have a condominium revolt in Waikiki and line up our streets with trash. Think about that. And third, there's a woman here that made an offer to you and you've been silent. She said to you, give her permission to have your phone number and give her permission to call you at any time of her choosing from two thirty A M. to six A M. And give her permission to play the two minute recording of the beeping, banging and clinging of the trash pickup activities. She was kind, she said only for one week. People in this community have been suffering for years. You didn't even respond to her for just a one week period to see what it feels like to experience this kind of abuse. You're a good man and I sincerely hope you change your consciousness and you see this as abuse. Because we have overcome all objections about this issue. Every single objection that the trash companies have brought up, we have overcome them. And you have access to our, our words and what our, our solutions are to this problem. You're a good man. Please reconsider. Think about the abuse of all from the very young to the very elderly. No one deserves this. Thank you very much. Catherine, I'm going to give you the last question and then.
Mr. Millwood, do you live in Waikiki?
Excuse me, Catherine?
I want to know if he lives in Waikiki.
You can ask questions of the, of the chair.
Chair, I don't know if Mr. Millwood lives in Waikiki, but I do. And I can tell you, when it takes me an hour at the beginning of Kuhil to get down to Kapahulu to my home because he's got an event going, I want to complain about it. And I don't believe that the community is fairly represented here tonight because we didn't know Mr. Millwood was going to show up about this. Because not everybody is in favor of it. And if the businesses complain, they have a right to complain. They're the ones that pay the rent. They're the ones that have to make that rent. And if the events are interfering with the regular customers coming in to see them, they have every right to be upset. I don't blame them. Third, Mr. Millwood has been asked to report the names of the charities that he is donating to. And as far as I'm aware, he has not yet done that. So it's not all bubbles and champagne, okay?
Thank you, everybody. Uh, we need to move on. And I'm going to ask the chair if, if you would stand by for anybody who wants to chat with you.
Sure, I'm looking for the, uh, looking forward to the rest of the meeting as well.
Okay.
Now, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Senator Sharon Moriwaki on, on, go for it. Sorry, folks, we're running a little bit late and I, we've got some very important presentations to do. Senator Moriwaki, are you still there?
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, great to, great to be with you all. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. I, uh, I'm under the weather, so, um, I'm zooming in since we don't have much time. I do have my, um, my report in the chat. Uh, it's, the link is there. Uh, trash, the trash noise, it has been, we've been beleaguered by it. And, uh, I did call a meeting with the two remaining trash companies and it is on Thursday. And, um, Carlino is, has talked with the mayor, so I'd like to know what, what exactly transpired there. But the two companies will be meeting with seven apartment, uh, buildings, condo buildings that had complaints about their trash collection early morning and the noise. So we are having a meeting on Thursday. If there's anyone who wants to join in on that meeting, uh, it's in my, um, in the chat. My report has a, uh, it's sending it to my office manager, c dot Izumoto, I Z U M O T O at capital dot Hawaii dot gov uh, for a Zoom link and you can join us. It says Zoom link on Thursday, uh, at five o'clock. And it'll be an hour meeting, so I hope it can focus on, uh, some options and solutions that we can, uh, hopefully, uh, get some resolutions so that, um, the trash companies and residents can work better together on, on the, the noise situation. Um, second, we've already heard much of the city work, uh, from Council Chair Waters. So the only other thing that, that, um, Kate, uh, Catherine brought up is the Alawai Small Boat Harbor parking situation. There are nine hundred forty-one parking stalls there at the Alawai Small Boat Harbor. The main issue is to have a, um, the vendor, uh, approved by the Board of Land and Natural Resources. That meeting is being held on December eighth. Along with it are options for parking, the free parking, the permanent parking and the, um, hourly parking, the paid parking. There are three types of parking there. And if you will go on to, um, the, my chat, uh, on the chat, my, my report, it does give you a link to the, the Board of Land and Natural Resources meetings. You should weigh in. If in fact you want free parking, this is where you should be voicing your, your concern. Uh, it is, as, uh, Chair Waters mentioned, it is a state function. It is under the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Uh, and they will be looking at the parking issue on December eighth. So please log in, weigh in and, and address those problems there. Uh, there are other, other kinds of programs going on. The Real Estate Commission is having a condo, um, education event on the eighteenth of November. Uh, information also is on my, my, um, on my report. And, uh, also two Supreme Court justices are being nominated. And we, the Senate will be in session next week to, uh, to confirm. We are now going through hearings, so if you have any concerns or input on any of these two nominees, Elisa Ginoza, who is currently the Chief Judge of the Intermediate Court of Appeals, and Vladimir Devens, who is an attorney, uh, who are both being nominated. And there's a hazard mitigation plan and also administrative rules by the State Department of Transportation. So open to questions.
Questions for Senator Moriwaki? A quick one, a quick one, please.
Senator, that's Catherine Henskey.
Yeah, hi Catherine.
Hi, do we need to submit the testimony or can we just go on the Zoom?
Um, I would, I would say you should submit the testimony. The board meets once a month. It's better to have, have your testimony in their hands so that they can see, you know, your concerns.
Do you know what time, what time it will be?
Um, it hasn't been mentioned yet because I, I think they were supposed to go through it on this past November meeting, but there wasn't enough notice on what was on the, um, agenda. So it's being rescheduled to, to, uh, December eighth. I can find out the time, uh, but if you go on to that link, it will give you when it is. So I don't have that information right now. Thank you.
Sure. Um, hi, Senator, I hope you feel better and I just wanted to thank you, actually. I really appreciate the fact that, you know, we elect officials because we have problems we can't solve. So we elect these officials, we pay for them because we need help solving problems. And I love the fact that you did mention like, oh, why don't you have a meeting, like talk with them? It's a, it's a little awkward for an individual to go up to a con, go to, to approach a company and be like, hey, um, could you tell this company that you have a contract with not to? So I love the fact that you're proactive and you actually set the meeting and you invited all the people. So I want to say I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Senator Moriwaki? Join everyone and wishing you, uh, quick recovery from your illness.
Thank you.
And we will look forward to seeing you.
Okay, and happy holidays, everyone.
Uh, does Adrian Tam, Representative Tam have a, no, there she is. And I apologize to everybody, our podium broke, so we don't have a nice podium tonight. But, uh, I'm going to go buy some Gorilla Glue and we will see if we can fix the guy.
Good evening, Flora from Representative Tam's office. He is on travel for legislative business. Um, we just have a couple of things. Um, the Ka'ul property that had the fire, um, last month. Um, there's been reports of increased looting, so we contacted the community policing team to try to increase patrols there and, um, hopefully they will, uh, enact that. Um, the House had their first water and supply working group hearing last Thursday on the eighth. Um, that went really well and the report is available on the Capitol website. Um, they're hoping to use the information they've gathered to propose legislature during the upcoming session, um, which is coming up very quickly. Um, so if you have ideas or issues that you want us to try to address this coming session in twenty twenty-four, please email our office or call and leave a message. Um, other than that, our newsletter is up on our website. I'm so sorry, I forgot to bring the paper copies, but, um, you're welcome to email us. It's also up on Representatives webpage. Um, and other than that, I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving and holidays.
Okay, uh, yeah.
So I'm actually just wanted a little bit of housekeeping. That, that report, because we have the Google Drive now, if you have anything, uh, any flyers, anything like that, that newsletter, of course, we could upload it to our Google Drive. So it'll be ready for the meeting, um, meeting and anything else you have to. And that's also for Senator Moriwaki, anyone else here in the audience?
Questions for, other questions for Representative Tam? Don't see any. Thank you very much for being with us. Bill Oka, are you here from the governor's office? Governor's representative? I don't see him here. Uh, Rick Eggit from the Waikiki Improvement Association?
You know, I'll be brief because I know you're behind times. But, uh, first of all, I'm always very interested to hear all the points of concern. And one of the things that I think is, is really critical is that these complaints also be reported to the appropriate city agencies because, believe it or not, the government is responsive, is complaint driven. And so they actually track the number of complaints they get about any specific area or any specific problem. And so if you have a problem today, call in and complain. If you have a problem, complain tomorrow too. Because each one, each time you call is counted as a complaint against that specific issue. And so if you don't know, uh, who to complain to, then that's something you could ask either your council member, your representative, or actually they have a line, a complaint line at the city. Can't remember the exact way to contact that. But, um, that's, that's the real issue is, is, um, that's what drives the police department to send more resources to a particular area. They're getting a lot of complaints in that area. And so, um, that's what kind of the general response that I would prefer. Like, for example, the issue that came up earlier about blocking the sidewalk. The Department of Planning and Permitting incite the owner of that business that they are violating their, like a, putting that sandwich board out on the sidewalk, that's a violation. Having their motorcycles or mopeds, whatever parked on the sidewalk, that's a violation. And so that, those, if you report those problems to the appropriate agency, and again, every time you see a problem, report it. It can't just be, well, I complained about that already. Because that's only one complaint. And so that's my advice to the community. Uh, you know, and, uh, believe me, it's something that we, we have to deal with all the time. There's issues regarding various, uh, problems all around Waikiki. Um, I, like, I will meet with, uh, uh, Councilmember Waters. And I know the Parks Department has had a hard time keeping the pump working at the, that's a gateway to Waikiki. You know, the Alawai Boulevard and Kapahulu Avenue pump water feature. It's supposed to be representative of spotting water of Waikiki and that's why it's a water feature. But if there isn't a, a way to do that without actually having to have a water feature there, I think we're certainly open to that idea. But, um, anyway, I'm going to stop and happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Who is?
Just a quick one. Um, sidewalks. I've had a number of complaints from residents regarding our sidewalks, the flagstone or slate. I don't know, I think there's a little bit of both, but, um, I, I've noticed in the last few years, it's gotten worse and worse. And it's degrading much quicker because the grout is not being replaced. It's, it's, you know, breaking out. There's a lot of holes and there's broken pieces and there's some serious liability, actually, I think, for our, uh, for our city. So we could have brought this up earlier with other representatives up there, but I'm going to bring it up to you to see if there's something you can do as an initiative. And then, you know, I'll, I'll try to take some photos and start a little bit of a promotion of, you know, how bad it is. It's actually.
Copy me, we actually, through the Business Improvement District Association, that they came and presented to the board. They monitor these on a daily basis.
Sure.
Report them on a weekly basis to the city. Uh, but, so it's really the city's responsibility to repair these issues. And, um, and I agree that oftentimes they create a liability for the city. And so, again, that's a complaint you should go ahead and, and send it to the Department of Facilities Maintenance. They're responsible for that and also copy.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Hi, uh, sir. So, um, I have a quick question for you. Did you see the news article that came out on Civil Beat October nineteenth about, um, nonprofits? Two different nonprofits, like there's one person getting full salaries from different nonprofits. Two different nonprofits, like there's one person getting full salaries from different nonprofits. Do you see that?
Mm-hmm, I saw it.
Great. So I was wondering, um, you have a number of associations. You have improvement associations. You had the Beach Improvement Association. There's the, um, the business one now is under someone else. Um, and you have the Transportation Improvement Association. And the Waikiki Improvement Association actually is a private business while those other three, is it? That are pseudo-government, pseudo, um.
No, they're, they're not government organizations, but they are nonprofits.
But however, those three were funded by taxpayer dollars. And the city actually collects special assessments on all the Waikiki businesses to fund this, the beach one, the transportation, the business. Um, so my quick question for you is, I was looking at the Beach Improvement Association. And I saw that, uh, they have a membership, uh, fee that they paid to the Waikiki Improvement Association.
That's, no, they don't.
Um, I can show you the documents, sir. Actually, I will upload it to the Google Drive.
The Beach Association does not have a membership fee. It does not.
No, 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 no. The Beach, sorry, point of clarification, sir. The Beach Improvement Association paid, that organization paid for a membership to the WIA.
No, they pay WA a management fee because we perform the management operation of that organization. In other words, we convene the meetings, we do all the filings, we keep the accounts, and we get paid an administrative fee.
So fifty thousand for, uh, administrative, and there's also a beach coordinator. Who's the beach coordinator?
The, he's, uh, Dolan Eversol. He works for the University of Hawaii and the Beach Association pays the University of Hawaii, um, seventy-five percent of his compensation. We have his services for the, as the Waikiki Beach Board.
Okay, so the, the, okay, fifty K is WA's management fee. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for Waikiki Improvement Association? Seeing that, Rick, thank you for being.
Can I just make a quick comment? I only get one salad.
Thank, thank you, Rick.
Point of clarification. Actually, point of clarification, sir, are you?
We, we have two presentations come here. Uh, first is the, uh, Hilton Club, the, um, for those of you that remember the Kings Village, uh, prior to COVID, there was a, um, proposal and accepted by the city to build a new building there. COVID stopped the construction. And right now, uh, we have a presentation to tell us the information about the construction starting again. So, go ahead.
Hi, aloha. Uh, first and foremost, Mahalo'apau and the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, uh, for inviting Hilton Grammations to your monthly meeting and allow us to share an update on the restart of our Kahaku Time Shirt development. Sorry, I'm off. Is this better? Sorry about that. Uh, my name is Tyler Middleton. I work for Hilton Grammations and I appreciate the opportunity to share an update, uh, with the community on the restart of our, on our, on the restart of our Kahaku Time Shirt development at the previous site of Kings Village. Uh, Hilton Grammations has been part of the Waikiki community for almost twenty-five years, uh, with six resorts, over sixteen hundred units and more than eight hundred employees. In September, in September twenty eighteen, Hilton Grammations acquired the project site from Black Sand Capital. Uh, construction began in twenty nineteen with the demo of the existing structure and was progressing well until March twenty twenty. Uh, the project will restart in earnest next month with an expected completion in June twenty twenty-six. At, at completion, project highlights include two hundred and five units, which is a mixture of studio, one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom suites. The amenity deck will be on the seventh floor. We'll have six floors of parking, two ground level retail stores, a pocket park on Prince Edward Street. Uh, the conversion of Kailani between Koa Avenue and Kalatua to a two-way street and a one million dollar community benefit package that'll be determined by the City Council. Uh, related to the schedule and as previously commented, the project will restart, uh, next month and the tower crane will be, will be assembled in January. Uh, we anticipate topping the structure off in July twenty twenty-five and completion in June twenty twenty-six. Uh, based on experience and project location, the, our project contractor has, has developed the, uh, the above route for material deliveries. From Kapuhulu and down the Alawai, we'll go Makai on Ahua. Um, we'll then make, uh, go Eva on Kukio, Makai on Ulu'neu, and then the project site is there on Prince Edward Street. Uh, to exit, we'll go back on to Kukio, uh, down to the Alawai, or, sorry, down, uh, down Kapuhulu, and down Kukio to Kapuhulu and X seven. Uh, the next slides are renderings. And with that, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight.
Questions from the board? Joe?
Yeah, thanks for your presentation update. Um, do you have a staging area outside of Waikiki or do you need a staging area on site? Or trucks are just gonna come in, drop stuff off and then head out?
It'll be coordinated, so, uh, they'll be able to come in, drop this, uh, drop materials off, uh.
And then leave?
Yeah.
Okay. And then just.
Um, all staging will be on-site. We're not gonna be island trucks around the property or anything.
All right, that's good. And you know that that area is very dense and, and modest citizens there. Uh, we always say just be careful, you comply with noise ordinance, um, and hours when you work at, at the facility. We reviewed this a couple of years ago. Um, everything you said, the two-way street, that was part of the deal and then the million dollar community give back. So appreciate the update.
I'm sorry, two quick questions. One is, um, who actually is funding this project? Who's, I mean, who's, who's the guy on top? Like who's?
Sorry, I'm not following my question.
Um, sorry, how do, like, who pays for page? I guess, like, who's in charge of this project? Who designed it? Like, there's always someone behind a project, correct?
So, so the project is being developed by Hilton Grammations?
Okay, great. And then what is the average cost of a condo there?
Uh, there are many different ways to look at it, size of unit, use, all that. Um, and, um, it'd be disingenuous for me to provide that information without specifics.
Could you give me a range or like say per, uh, square inch, like have, or just a range? What's a, how about this? What is the cheapest condo there?
I am not, um, I'm on the development side, so that's more on the sales and marketing side. If you do go to our website, it does give a whole list of ranges, uh, for intervals, but it's speaking very broad brush. Again, not gonna be specific to your.
Thank you, sir.
It's been a few years and so, uh, but my recollection was that at the time we, we voted to support it, in exchange for approval, somehow the developer was gonna either do something they weren't required to do or not do something that they could have done, like it could have been more, could have been higher or it could have been more dense or something like that. So I'm just wondering if you can articulate how, as the project is unfolding, that, that commitment has been carried out in terms of what this thing could have looked like compared to what it does look like.
Uh, when Hilton Grammations purchased this in twenty eighteen from Black Sand, uh, we purchased it turnkey. Uh, we have not made any adjustments to the exterior. Uh, all modifications have been interior alone. Uh, we've stayed within the, um, within the permitted entitlements. Um, so that's, I, I can't answer too much on the, what was.
You took a subject of whatever commitments they, they agreed to.
Yes, sir.
But you're not personally aware of the, of the, the fine points or the differences in terms of what it could have been. Maybe, maybe Jeff would have a better recollection.
Well, yeah, I, I know when we did debate this, um, we did say, what's the community give back to the old firm? And they did agree to the million dollar. And I believe Trevor Ozawa was, was our rep at the time. And we said, well, we wanna say, you know, what the, what that million's gonna go to. And I'm paraphrasing him, but he said, no, City Council will decide, which is, that's the way it is, that's fine. But, but my understanding is it's a million dollars, as it is right now, to be decided by City Council. But we had a list of things that we recommended and I seen our recent.
I recall the million dollar thing, but I, it seemed to me that there was some kind of, that the view plane would be impacted less. They were gonna tilt, move it a certain way or, or design it in a certain way that it might not.
Are all the items I've been giving you mind shares or are there something that you have to share?
Same.
I don't understand. And for the, if you have work, because that would save you the fee?
Fee, right. Our management. Yes, so probably. And, um, we are pushing to try to find this. Last night had no address, if anyone.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have the Department of Transportation from the city and county of Honolulu. Uh, Peter, are you, are you here for the Alawai Bridge update?
Uh, before we get started, I did see some comments in the chat about the sound was a little muffled. Is it better now? For the people online, that is. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Chair, and thank you for the time today. Uh, my name is Pete Carino. I'm, uh, from Sidney County, near Honolulu, Department of Transportation Services. I'm the branch chief for the Performance Branch. Uh, many of you may remember our previous, uh, project manager for the Alawai Bridge, Maritoniatt, who, um, unfortunately left, uh, the city and county and went back to the mainland. We're fortunate to have a new project manager, Max Calhammer, who comes to us with global experience. Um, and he's gonna give us a brief update on the project and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Max?
Thank you, Pete. Thank you, Chair, Neighborhood Board, everybody here. It's great to be here. Thank you for inviting us to give you an update on the Alawai Canal, Alapono Pedestrian Bridge Project. We've brought a few informational slides to help you get up to speed with where we're at. So for the project history, uh, it goes back for almost a half century, uh, to the middle of the twentieth century to, um, where we were talking about crossing the Alawai and regional plans. And most recently, uh, in twenty twenty, the formal, uh, analysis was completed and the draft EA was issued in twenty twenty-one. Public feedback was received from over three hundred in-person house participants, nine hundred in-person surveys and a hundred online surveys to help identify the preferred alternative for the bridge. In twenty twenty-two, HDR Inc., the designer for the city, completed its sixty-five percent design set. In twenty twenty-three, early twenty twenty-three, not included on this slide, the Department of Transportation Act, Section four F determination was approved. And the state review of the HRS six E process was concurred by, um, the State Historic Preservation Office. So we are at the point, and at the same time, in early twenty twenty-three, we, the city, decided and sought approval from the Federal Highway Administration to go with a design-build approach, which allows one contractor to both design and build. And it's also can be seen as an opportunity to look at the project in a new way, not to defeat the purpose of the project, which is a pedestrian and bicycle crossing across the Alawai, but to potentially consider new configurations, meaning new types of bridges and, um, new technical concepts for the current sixty-five percent design. Next slide, please. So the description of the bridge is, or the project, is that it's a sixty-three million dollar project under its current design. Now, the design-build approach allowed us to not, uh, seek the lowest bid, but the best value proposal. And the best value proposal, if it comes in under sixty-three million, the city and county, of course, is gonna be very happy because we're providing twenty percent of the local share for the raised grant award. Um, some of the benefits that were estimated as part of the raised grant application that was awarded in June of twenty twenty-three are seven hundred and fifty daily mode shifts. That's people to project bridge users. Two hundred and seventy-three thousand, almost two hundred and seventy-four thousand reduction in annual person trips. Hundred and sixty-four thousand reduction in annual car, uh, motorcycle vehicle. Three hundred thousand reduction in annual car motorcycle trip miles. And a hundred and nineteen metric tons per year in annual carbon dioxide emissions. That doesn't include the other particulate reduction and the nit, um, the volatile compound reduction as well. So the design-build contract award is anticipated. Uh, our award for the design-build contract, we're going into RFQ and RFP in the fall and winter of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. We're anticipating the award of the design-build contract in the end of June in, in twenty twenty-four. So the, the beginning of fiscal year twenty-five. And the NEPA process in the Section one oh six, which is sex, the, um, National Historic Preservation Act, Section one oh six, um, is, it's still ongoing. And we do anticipate a finding of no significant impact, a mitigated finding, probably, um, in the end of January of twenty twenty-four. We anticipate about one year to design the bridge. We go through final design in about three years to build it. Next slide, please. Project schedule, as I, like I said, the RFP and the design going twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, beginning in twenty twenty-five, in the fall of twenty twenty-five is when we'll have construction beginning. And it will last, uh, roughly two and a half years. There'll be some overlap between design and construction, like, um, the, the, um, what we call the mobilization of the project. And for the project budget, um, according to the current design and the raised grant, we have almost a million for the preliminary engineering. Three and a half for the final design. Fifty-one, over fifty-one million for the construction of the bridge. And seven point seven for what we call inspection, our construction management. And 7.7 for what we call inspection, our construction management totaling $63.4 million. The bridge will obviously be having a very attractive bridge for that price, but it'll also have performance specs that go along with it, like a minimum 20-foot wide deck width. Have the capacity to carry 25,000, um, bricks. Next slide, please. That's my name, Max Calhammer, and I'm the project manager for BTS. Uh, they'll be, uh, uh, city owner's representative as well from Parsons Transportation. And that's my email address, max.calhammer@honolulu.gov. And we are, uh, definitely here to talk with you and answer any questions that you have about this exciting project that could help Waikiki really reinvigorate itself and its, and its residents, we believe. And I was just asking, Pete, what was the last big infrastructure project that Waikiki has had? New infrastructure. And he thought, well, maybe it's the, um, beach maintenance project that was completed in 2021. And think about it, that's not even a real, like, concrete infrastructure project. So this is something that we're very proud of, that we have got the federal funding and we're going to go forward with it. Any questions?
Okay, I'm going to start with Catherine, move over to you.
Um, I was told that the bridge is actually a tribute to the Hokulea, and that's why it was designed with a sweeping structure. Is that correct?
I'm not sure about the Hokulea, but it's, it's supposed to be evocative of sailing, um, and also musical instruments and waterfalls, is what I was told.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Worth.
And hi, sir. I'm so glad you're here. Thank you for making the time. I just have, uh, three quick questions. Um, my, my biggest one, I was looking at what you stated. It's, you said, um, potentially consider new configurations. Is that, what does that, does that mean that later on the bridge's purpose can be changed? It can be altered. And you also said the capacity to hold 25K on the deck capacity, 20,000K. Is that, so could this bridge be later converted to, for cars?
No.
Okay, good. That's the first one. So, um, the second one is, um, so back in 2016, this board did approve this bridge, but at the time, it was only about 11 million. So I, but I cannot for the life of me find any designs that would fit that 11 million mark. Are those available? Or there's no designs made for the 11 million until the government shipped into 25?
There was a sound when you were talking. Could you repeat?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Um, so I'm just curious to know if there was a prior design for this bridge? And also representatives and senators keep saying, oh, this, uh, design is not final. It's a work in progress. Um, are, what are the other designs that were presented? Cause you said there were newer specs or?
Well, like, um, I mentioned in the beginning, there was an alternatives analysis and there were probably some early designs for the bridge and it's been studied for a long time. But the formal process that was undertaken with a contract with HDR was, began in 2019 and it was never a, an $11 million bridge. Is that right? As far as Pete knows as well.
So, so, well, the short question is, how come this thing looks like the Golden Gate Bridge? Uh, the lo, the longer question is, uh, at the time that we voted to support this, we did vote for a, uh, no, no design was presented to us, but I think we envisioned sort of a little footbridge over the canal. And so I guess the question is, how come that what's being presented is something that looks like a cross between the Tower of London and the Golden Gate Bridge? And is obviously a much more intrusive design than what I think most of us implicitly envisioned we were voting for.
Thank you for that question. So we're, we are anticipating that question and we anticipate it going forward into the design-build process where we have the opportunity to perhaps change that design. But the reason for its height in its current design is because it's a clear-span cable-stayed bridge that needs to have the fulcrum, the tower, to hold it up from one side, basically.
Well, is there, is there any reason why it couldn't be built, you know, more like the Macaulay Bridge or something like that, where, where something that would have been pounded into the canal and, and not have that big span?
The public input that we received prior to my, even my arrival at the city and, and Pete's arrival at the city was that there was a desire for no piers in the water, support columns in the water. And the Army Corps also had some reservations about that as well. So we pursued this type of design for those reasons. And also the canoe club expressed an interest in having a clear span so that there could be the same type of traditional cultural practice of canoeing down the Alaway without interference from, um...
Look, okay, so just so we're clear, because I've gotten lots of different answers to this question over the years. And at times I've been told, oh, no, historic preservation, it's against the law to do it. So we're clear now that you're saying it's not against the law to do it the other way. It's, it just wasn't the preferred design.
I, I think that's an accurate statement, yes. And I think, Greg, did you want to add something?
There's no, there's nothing illegal about, about the columns in the canal, the, the way lots of people have been telling us that for a long time. It's just not the way, whether it's you or the city or the contractor wants to do it, right?
Pete can help me out with this, but I think, you know, there's, there are regulations that need to be, um, complied with and a permit that needs to be sought if an alternative design.
And just, uh, the original purpose and need of the project, one of the, uh, purposes and needs of this project was to not make the flooding situation worse for Waikiki. So, uh, there was a public safety component for Waikiki and for points, uh, points further Diamond Head. So if you put piers in the water, that basically creates a constriction, uh, on the flow of water in a storm event. And that would, um, well, it wouldn't be legal per se. That would not be consistent with the original purpose and need of the project that was adopted.
Isaac, so that, so that's the rationale now, right? Because again, I've heard lots, I've heard first that was the, that the paddlers didn't want this, historic preservation. Okay, so now it's, it's the flooding, right?
Well, that purpose.
And I, I'm not saying you're wrong. I just, I just, I just want to get a straight answer one way or the other as to why it has to have the design that it has. I just want, I just want somebody to be clear and consistent and honest about where we're at with it. That's all.
Yeah.
So that, so that.
That's not a now thing. That was what was in the purpose and need when it was originally went out of comment of that 2020, 2021. So that was what was written up at the time. We have, uh, this project, trying to get people across the canal. We're trying to keep it safe and prevent, uh, flooding from getting worse. So those were the original.
So, so that's the rationale now.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's the rationale that was in place for the environment, the draft environment assessment.
So I'm going to be brief because I want the public to be able to speak. And the gentleman that has his hand up, I'd like to be next if possible because he's the best person to talk on this topic. Uh, my brief statement is, in 2016, there was a resolution passed by this board that was a different board at the time. Some of the board members are still participating here, but just a few. And that resolution was for what was identified as an $11 million bridge, a, a modest bridge. Um, I'm not going to go into those details. I'm holding in front of me and I'm, we don't have much time, so I'm not going to read any of this, what I had as a statement. But this is excerpts from the, uh, environmental impact report. And I've read through this and my take on this is you guys aren't reading it. Um, clearly you said Meredith Soniat. Is that if I pronounced her name properly? She's no longer in the picture, correct? I wish she was in the picture because if she was in the picture, I'd have a lot of questions for her. You need to read this. I'm going to defer to the gentleman who's probably the best in this room to answer questions and tell concepts of what, you know, his ideas are about urban planning and this bridge and this concept. So I'm going to default to that if, if Chair Finley could call on, um, the gentleman that just had his hand up. Um, he's a, he's a professor emeritus at University of Hawaii.
I can do that, but I, I need to remind everybody of the time. And we've talked a lot tonight and eaten up a bunch of our time, so we are time sensitive. Uh, go ahead, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. I am Luciano Minervi. I am a retired emeritus professor at the University of Hawaii in urban and regional planning. I'm the former vice chair of the Makali Moili neighborhood board, board member of the Moili community center, a former city and county commissioner on housing, community development. I cannot in two and a half minutes cover everything, but I took the time to submit to this board. So you have it on record, uh, three pages of a statement of testimony against the proposed bridge across the Alaway Canal and picture the document, every point I made. Basically, every project has a positive and negative impact, but what need to be done, look at the distributional aspect of this impact on the different segment of the community and the locality. And the draft environmental assessment of more than 1,000 pages with the appendices don't cover the four pages that I gave you. So I plead with you, please read what I gave you because it's not been addressed by the city and county, has not been addressed in this presentation, is not addressed in one-page document of the draft environmental assessment that claimed that there is no impact. There is impact on the children of the Alaway school. Please look at that. I have a lack of the school that say the concern about the traffic and what will happen with the impact of the bridge. There is an impact on the beautiful little people's park that we have over there, the people's garden, a great asset for our community that is going to be impacted. And I explain why. Even more that, that little park is the, one of the places where the Pacific Islander come, not for a family picnic, but for their village meetings, for their village encounter. There is the facility there that they can have the kupuna, the elderly, the children together because they can watch each other and the youth, they can play. And then the truck, no, I have two minutes and a half. I, I can't talk. Please, because we never have time to talk. Everybody else has time to talk and not to look at the impact that we have on this community. This is a big project. It's impact the community. It should be documented. So the draft environmental assessment does not do a decent job. I think it's unprofessional. I think we deserve a full environmental interstatement to look at the actual impact and the effect and the distribution. And then the major things, the whole with the bridge, pedestrian and, and bike, there will be people from all Maoka coming down with the cars and try to park over there. That is the major impact. One of the major impact, the document of the city and county should look at that. And then also a bigger problem for us, I've been here half a century in this Alaway, that the city didn't really look properly at the history of this project. There was, um, neighborhood board, Manoa, Makali Moili, Waikiki, voting against the bridge back then that was planned because the government always wanted to do a vehicular one. And then they changed it to the pedestrian one. But maybe it is so big, so overdesigned, because then they change the sign and becomes vehicular in the future. So we have to watch out what is the engineering, uh, design of these, uh, of this bridge. So please, um, read what I said. I am available to explain all these, um, problems that, um, needed to be addressed, that needed to be mitigated. And I think the best way is really not to build the bridge here at University Avenue, but improving the Makali Bridge for pedestrian, for bike, because it's very inadequate there. Then there is the major things. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
The major things.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I have other people.
So, uh, read what I said.
Okay.
The lady in black.
Originally, I was against the, uh, flamboyant design, but now that you explained that it won't take up space in the Alaway, uh, I understand and I accept that. Um, I am for the bridge. And as he said, in 1970, the state and the city came together and said, let's build a bridge because there's only two, two ways, as Waters, uh, Mr. Waters said earlier, in and out of Waikiki. And in case, uh, you need to evacuate, uh, we need this bridge over the Alaway. So the city and the state agreed to build it. And yes, they bent to the, to the, uh, people, uh, on his side of the bridge and, and it never happened. So, um, I am for the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just glad that you chose that particular location, university down. If you had chosen the other alternative seaside to the Alaway Golf Course and the bridge to the dock park, I would have fought you tooth and nail because of the integrity of the golf course would be compromised and what may happen to the property of the golf course down the road. So good luck to you and, uh, you know, good luck.
I see we have another gentleman back here. Sir.
Hello, thank you. I'm Cam Napier. I live in the Marco Polo. Uh, nice to visit you, uh, from across the canal. I drove here because there wasn't a convenient bridge, you know, for me to walk across to get here, uh, expeditiously. I'm in favor of the bridge. I'm in favor of the design that we have. And I understand that the city wants to be responsive to this sudden outbreak of opposition by being flexible on the design. But I would ask that the city also be responsive to the public that participated in the process that resulted in that design. The design is reminiscent of beautiful bridges around the world by Santiago Calatrava. He's a Spanish architect engineer, uh, just fantastic centerpieces for the cities that have them. This bridge can be a beautiful centerpiece for Honolulu for decades to come. And I got to say, as someone who lives in Macaulaymoiliili, and I've been going to these meetings, I'm embarrassed by some of the things that people on my side of the canal say when they oppose this bridge. It's all just fear of crime that this neighborhood here, Waikiki, is nothing but pimps, prostitutes and drug dealers. That, I've heard people say that out loud at Macaulaymoiliili neighborhood board meetings over the years. If we build this bridge, all the pimps, prostitutes and drug dealers of Waikiki are going to come into our neighborhood. I'm just embarrassed and, and I apologize to Waikiki on behalf of Macaulaymoiliili because this is a nice place. I mean, anxiety is about the kids at Alaway Elementary. You got an elementary school right here. The kids are fine. So I, I just find a lot of the objections to the bridge to be, uh, really, uh, irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I hate to say it, folks, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. We are out of time. We have a contract with this building. We have a contract with this building, so we have run out of time tonight.
I'd like to make a motion that we add this to the next agenda, to, so that people who did not get a chance to speak will.
If, if they're willing to come back, I'll ask.
Um, anyone, one second? So.
I just want to make sure that the resolution that I propose is going to be on the agenda.
And our reports, which we often don't get to make, we, we could, we could push to the next meeting, please, in January.
Yep. I'm sorry, everybody, but we have run out of time on our contract. See you all next year. Please put the chairs and tape the chairs against the wall, do not stack them up. Thank you.
Chair, happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas to everybody.
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Happy New Year, too.